Make sure that's almost time.
If I may have your attention, please. Welcome to our meeting this evening. The date is April 22, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. At this time, I ask that you stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi will be absent. Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Stell.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Matthew Gleason, the finance director, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the public works director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. I learned before the meeting that consent agenda item 7K has been polled. Council members, are there any other consent agenda items that you would like polled? Hearing none, we shall continue. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we will continue. The first item on our agenda is recognition of Scott Keel for 30 years of service with the city of Grand Island. I appreciate Battalion Chief Scott Keel being here tonight and his wife Kendra, and you have some fellow fire department people with you. I'm glad to see them also. Scott, it's my distinct honor tonight to recognize your service as battalion chief for the Grand Island Fire Department. You have reached an incredible milestone, 30 years of dedicated service to the city of Grand Island. Scott, a few things have changed around here since you first stepped into Fire Station One, and your commitment to this community and to the safety of our residents is admirable. Over three decades, you've stood on the front lines of emergencies, helping lead, shape, and grow our fire department into what it is today. As our city has evolved, so have you, meeting every challenge with professionalism, compassion, and an unwavering drive to improve. You've also helped train the next generation by adapting new technologies, and you've never stopped learning. It's that example that allows you to lead. That kind of growth over such a long and demanding career is rare and something we here at the city deeply admire. A little bit about your history. On April 17, 1995, you were hired as a firefighter EMT. On October 18, 2004, you were promoted to fire captain. On December 30, 2013, you were promoted to shift commander, and on October 13, 2019, your job title was changed from shift commander to battalion chief. Battalion Chief Keel, on behalf of a grateful city, I thank you for your service, your leadership in your heart. Congratulations on 30 outstanding years with the Grand Island Fire Department. And the way we here at the city honor your service is to present you with a 30-year service award certificate and a Grand Island PIN. So, Mrs. Grenier, please accompany me down to the front. Battalion Chief Keel, I am honored to present you with this 30-year service award, and it states, "We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Scott Keel for your loyalty, diligence, and dedicated service during your tenure with the city of Grand Island." It is signed by your chief, Corey Schmidt, and by me as mayor. Congratulations, sir. And I would like to impose upon you and have you state some reflections about your service with the Grand Island Fire Department.
Well, thank you, everybody, for this, and thanks to, first of all, my wife. She put up with this whole deal for 30 years. And my two daughters, they're probably watching on Grand Island TV right now, so thank you to them also. But, yeah, I feel like I'm one of the lucky people in the world. I found a job that I love. I continue to love it to this day. I still have that nervous anticipation about going to work, about thinking I've seen everything, but realizing I haven't seen everything. And I made the mistake to say that, well, I think I've been here long enough, I've seen about everything, and then tomorrow comes, and I have to take that back. I feel like a square peg that fit in a square hole here in Grand Island, the fire department, the city, the rest of the city workers. I've had such great coworkers over the years, people that were, you know, old like me when I started, and now I've kind of taken their spot, and I see them, and I talk to them yet today. And, you know, just the amount of change that I've seen and the amount of support from the city council and the city taxpayers, you know, our new fire station number one. I was hired because of the first fire station number four. That's been rebuilt. Fire Station Three in the process of being rebuilt, and if you haven't been by that, you ought to go see it, because that's something that is amazing to me, and thank you for that, and thank you to Corey for presenting that to you guys so we can get that rebuilt. I've loved every minute of it, and I'll give a little bit of firefighter advice. My career, when it began, fires were caused by cigarettes and candles, still is happening today, but now we've got to start looking out for lithium ion batteries. You probably saw that in the paper, the press release. I think that's another thing to be worried about in the future. It's something we need to learn more about. If you think about it, how many batteries we have in our house and how many batteries we're driving around the street, it is something that we're continuing to learn about, so be careful with your lithium ion batteries. And 30 years, I don't know how much longer I'll be around here, but if I keep on loving this job, I might be here for 35. I'll have to see what she says. But thank you for this, and thank you for the city of Grand Island for your support for me all these years.
To have our great employees come in is always the most enriching part of our meetings. Council members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 7A through Q with the exception of K? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we approve the consent agenda with the exception of 7K.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
7K, approval of two-year, three-month police service contract with the Hall County Housing Authority for April 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027. Good evening, chief. Please present.
Thank you, mayor and council, for the opportunity to talk just a short few minutes about this critical position. With our staffing levels coming back, it's been a few years, but we're now able to fill this very critical position with a police officer, not just any police officer. I'm really happy to announce that Officer Olson, who has decades of experience in the police department, is going to be the one as our officer in this position. He's a great officer. I can't say more good things about him. He's a great communicator, and he's a great relationship builder. So, that's where this position excels, is he's a force multiplier to the group of people that Hall County Housing Authority serves, over 500 people, and he'll be able to build relationships and communicate and help this group. To show a little bit of the relationship that we have, I invited Executive Director Thompson here to say a couple of words about Hall County Housing Authority as well. So, Director.
And for the record, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Artina Thompson.
Thank you.
I'm excited to be here, especially with us cultivating a relationship with Officer Olson already. He has now been in the office in and out, and our staff feels that he is the best candidate for the position, as well as the tenants that are coming in and out our office. They do respect his presence there, and I also believe that once he gets started and he gets an opportunity to visit all our campuses, that the behaviors will change, the respect level will change, and also I feel that this will help the city as well, because sometimes those behaviors can filter out to the city past our campus. So, we all are just excited for him to come aboard, and we gave him an office right there in the front so he can be seen and visual for all.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2025-132.
Mr. Sheard.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah, thank you, chief, for being here. Thank you, Executive Director, as well. I was just curious about the whole position, because it's not something that I remember, but it sounds like something that's been filled in the past. And based on the words that you said, there are times that you just need that presence there to help control certain behaviors that may get out of hand at times. Just kind of curious of, you know, just about how much time the officer will be there? Is this like an eight-hour, 10-hour day type thing, or how's that all work?
It's going to be a Monday-through-Friday day position for that officer, but that officer, that position is critical, and it's critical who we put in that position as well. And so, it's a double win for us, because not only do we get to fill that position, but we get to fill it with an officer who has exceptional experience and communication ability. And it is, it's not so much about the criminal side of it of the equation, it's more about building relationships, being a resource for the clients that are in Hall County Housing Authority. And so, that helps build those relationships. It's not, very little of what that officer does, for the most part, really is an enforcement aspect. It's more of an advisement, relationship, being a resource for the people that are there, the vast majority that want to have a nice place to stay, work, et cetera, have a good life. So, I'm really excited about filling this position, because it has been vacant for several years now, and with the new staffing levels coming back, we are able to fill it. And for the most part, that position will be available to the people in Hall County Housing Authority 24/7. He'll be a resource 24/7, but for the most part, he'll work your normal hours during the week.
Super. And the Executive Director, how long have you been with the authority now? I think that role turned over a year or two ago, or?
I've been in the role since September of 2023.
All right, very good. Well, welcome aboard. A little late, but welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief.
For the Executive Director, how many residents do you have now?
We have 600 residents in our properties. We have 394 public housing units. Some of those are scattered sites within the community and single-family dwellings. And then we also have some tax credit properties throughout the community, and we have two properties that we own that we treat as affordable housing. There's no subsidies tied to it from HUD.
You have a lot of residents, it sounds like, and a lot of work. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Denny.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We now take up our public hearings. 8A, public hearing request from B&amp;B Theaters Operating Company, Inc., DBA B&amp;B Theaters, Grand Island 7, with B-roll bowling, 1593 Conestoga Drive, Grand Island, Nebraska, for a Class I liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
An application for a Class I liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on March 25, 2025. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on April 12, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on March 25, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspection. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Brown, you have the motion.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve 2025 Tag 139.
Thank you, Mr. Lanfair. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. McIntyre, the license was approved. You're free to go or stay, however you like. 8B, public hearing request from Husak Ventures LLC, DBA, The Venue at Railside, 205 West First Street, Grand Island, Nebraska, for a Class C liquor license. Mrs. Grenier.
An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on March 26, 2025. A notice to the general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on April 12, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on March 26, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code alcoholic beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspection. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Please proceed, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I move we approve 2025 Tag 140.
Mr. O'Neil.
I second that we approve 2025 140.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Folks, the venue license has been approved. 8C, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement 4160, Gold Core Drive, Store Capital Acquisitions. Mr. Schmitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually a service installed at Platt Valley Industrial Park, Gold Core Road. It was, an easement was never filed for back in 2005, so we are going to formalize the easement that should have been undertaken back then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve 2025 141.
Mr. Conley.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8D, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement 3530, Sheridan Avenue, CHI, Nebraska. Mr. Schmitz.
This is the electrical service to CHI's service to their new medical office building, located just on the north side of Capitol and Legacy South Subdivision.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Please proceed, Mr. Lanfair.
5-142.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8E, public hearing on acquisition of public right-of-way and permanent easement for South Locust Street improvements, Foner Park Road to Second Street, Project Number 2021-P-6, Fuller, Bubbles LLC, Espinoza, Grimm, Riki, and Perez. Mr. Kurtz.
Yes, good evening. This is another series of right-of-way acquisitions for the South Locust Project that is currently under construction.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass 2025 143.
Thank you, Mr. Stelk. Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9A, approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2024-2025 fee schedule. Good evening, Mr. Schultz. Please tell us what this is about.
Good evening, city council. Mostly information's in the packet that would be applicable, but the long and short of it is the state has passed on a disposal fee that we are required to pay. It's a per-tonnage fee, and then we also had a planned rate increase that was going to go into effect 10-1. We have a planned borrowing for the transfer station upgrade and cell four project that will be coming in the coming months. The intent is basically to send a message to future borrowers that we are raising that revenue stream that we will leverage for future borrowing. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, council. A motion is in order. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass Resolution 2025 144.
And Mr. Lanfair. Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah, Brian, just while you're here, the state has increased a fee. We were planning some fee adjustments ourself. Has that affected the fee that we're going to charge, or is that more for the trash haulers themselves? Is it all intertwined where that overall fee to the user is going to be adjusted then?
Yes, it is all baked into it. So, the fees that are in the schedule itself have that additional fee and our planned rate increase all rolled into one. And so, the administration and public works, we had a meeting, and the determination was that we should just go ahead and have it go into effect 10-1 of 2025 at this point. But it does have both those things baked into it, yes.
You remember, I don't remember the details on it, did it affect it by another, what the governor increased? Is that what the overall cost was to the end user then?
Yeah, so, the $1.25 per ton, it was the current disposal fee. It's going to go up to $2.34. Jeff Water here had indicated that they haven't really changed that in a very, very long time, probably pushing 15 to 20 years. And so, he was surprised it took them this long to bump up the fee. But this is a fee that we're required to pay, so we bake it into the rates, so that in turn, we are passing it on to the consumer as part of the rate structure.
And it's pretty insignificant overall, in the big picture.
It can equate to about $30-ish thousand a quarter, so, I mean, $120,000 a year. So, it's not chump change, but in the big scheme of things, it's not a huge dollar amount.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I believe you mentioned last Wednesday that our solid waste disposal fees are still lower than all of our regional competitors. Is that still true?
That is still accurate and true. We haven't done that comparison in the last six months or so, but the last time we specced them out, we were still very, very competitive, yes.
Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9B, approving the support of preferencing future land used in support of veterans for the eastern portion of Lot 2 of the Veterans Legacy Subdivision. A couple preliminary matters. Councilmember Doug Brown and Councilmember Mike Pollock will be commenting on this. And, no, you do have it up. Mr. Councilmember Nickerson wanted it brought up on the screen so we could see where the land is located. Councilmember Brown, I now defer to you.
This is for the land that's north of the new veterans cemetery up to Highway 2, and I think it was around 27 acres, but for future growth of the veterans cemetery. We figured that when we're building this new cemetery, that it's got a 50-year lifespan, but after that, we will need more land, and this could give us 100 or more years for that cemetery if we add this. And what it's doing is just going to put a marker on it that it's safe for the veterans. It's not, we're not actually taking ownership of it, but we will at a later time. Any questions? We discussed this before. I brought this up with the Hero Flight Committee, which is running the cemetery committee too, and they voted, they were for it, so.
Well, I think Mr. Pollock would like to say a few things, too.
I suppose, mayor, thank you. Maybe this will finally put to rest the rumors that I hear around town that we're going to build a subdivision in there or commercial lots or gas station. This is going to be preference for veterans use, whether it be state cemetery, county cemetery, county park. We don't know what's going to happen in the next 50 to 100 years, but they will have someplace to go to. And I think that's probably the major thing of this council, and we'll hope the other councils see fit to follow in our steps.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve 2025 145.
And Mr. Lanfair.
I second.
Discussion. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I guess, two things. One, I don't know that I've had this on an agenda before, so can somebody explain to me exactly what support of preferencing means and?
Well, I think it's just an expression of this council that, to future councils, that they would like to give preference to this use by the veterans when they decide, if they decide, how this land is used. if they decide, how this land is used someday. So it's an expression of, it's a forward-thinking expression to future city councils that it's the wish of this council that the land be dedicated to the use of veterans. Did I say that correctly, Mrs. Fisk?
Well, I like the way you said it, because I support that. I think, as Mike had said, hopefully this lets people know this is what our intention is with it. We've had different folks come and ask different things about this. I know we can't technically say this is exactly what it's going to be used for today, because we can't control it, but I like that we can say to future councils, this is what it should be used for as of right now and hopefully 50 years into the future. So thank you for the clarification.
We just, just more or less putting a nameplate on it so that for future use, and it gives what we, our thoughts on it was.
And currently, it, based on that picture, it looks like it's being farmed?
Farm lease has been terminated. All of the farm leases on the city's property out there were terminated. It really is just dry land farming now for that small irregular parcel. So that was terminated with the further north parcel.
What will need to be done, anything done with it? I know the word.
Nothing different than what we already have planned to do with it. All right, we own it. The city owns it. So it will continue to be, the city will continue, excuse me, to be responsible for maintaining it and keeping it free of nuisances or weeds, things like that. So we'll continue to manage the property. But what this does, if you think about back to the recent action that you took with the land adjacent to Island Oasis, a prior city council had reserved a portion of that land for the future construction of the law enforcement, or actually firefighters memorial. The law enforcement memorial was already built. But that's how it was done, is the city council passed a resolution saying, we're setting aside this area of city property for this future use.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear.
Mr. Landfair?
I was, I would have liked to see it locked down a little tighter for the veterans in the future, but I reached out to the veterans. They all like it. The guys out at the veterans club said this is what they've been wanting for a long time. So it's, they deserve it.
Mr. Stell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, are the veterans married? Does, can his wife be buried there, too?
Yes.
Okay.
She's, there you can place the veteran on the bottom and the wife on the top.
Okay.
I just also think that we should thank the city attorney for drawing this up and helping us along the route. Thanks, Gary.
She's always very helpful.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 9C Approving the Execution of an Investment Grade Audit Agreement for Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract with Honeywell Building Technologies, Inc. Mr. Schultz?
Again, so it's my privilege to introduce this to you guys. Most of you may not know what this is. We've been working for quite a while now. The long and short of it is, we have a lot of infrastructure, high-dollar-ticket R&amp;M-type items that were either, we didn't have the resources, they were neglected, et cetera. And so we've had an energy audit completed with, a preliminary energy audit done with Honeywell. The Honeywell team is here, and they're going to present here in just a moment. But we have a lot of facilities around the entire city, so we were trying to highlight the ones that were our big-ticket dollar items. And along with that is our recent acquisition of the Heartland Events Center as well. So there's a lot of money that needs to be invested into our properties to take care of them the right way, being good stewards of those properties. And so this kind of came to light about, this could be a good solution to that for us. The long and short of it is, we will look for energy efficiency savings to lower our dollar amount of what we actively pay in those utility bills. And then those savings are what we reinvest to help pay for those improvements. And so these guys will do a much better job of explaining it. I would just ask that you let them give their presentations to the end, because they may answer your questions, and then they will answer any questions that you have at the end of it. So, thank you.
We have Jordan Baloli, Josh Hounsell, and Don Borgman. I hope I did not mispronounce any of your names. Okay. And please state your name. It's required by our rules.
So I am Jordan Baloli. I'm your local account executive, sales representative for the Honeywell Energy Solutions Group. Got Josh Hounsell with me.
Josh Hounsell, I'm the central region energy sales leader. Jordan works for me.
And I'm Don Borgman with Honeywell, heading up the technical committee.
Perfect. And couldn't be here with us today, but Joe Corcello is our project management lead. He participated in this assessment quite heavily as well. So a bit of an agenda for us today. This is a fairly lengthy presentation. We'll try and keep it as brief as we can, but we want to make sure we convey all this important information to you before you make any decisions. So we'll go through a bit of a background, you know, why we're sitting here today, what brought us here. We will discuss our preliminary facilities, energy analysis, and some benchmarking of your facilities compared to facilities of a similar use case. Discuss our recommended ECMs, or energy conservation measures, and PHIMS, or facility improvement measures. And then we will review ESPC as an alternative funding strategy. So ESPC stands for Energy Savings Performance Contracting. We'll talk a little bit through, we'll talk a little bit about our specific project development process and how these projects are developed, and why Honeywell would be the perfect partner for you all to implement these projects with. And then there's time at the end for some Q and A. So background, why are we here? Overall, the city had expressed concerns about not only high utility bills, but continually increasing utility bills at several of these facilities that we will highlight. The goal is to lower that total utility spend for you and consequently lower your operating budget for these facilities. There's also been concerns around deferred maintenance and aging energy infrastructure in these facilities. Your teams have been doing a great job of keeping the facilities operating efficiently with the resources you have. But at a certain point, you do need more of a comprehensive approach to make sure these facilities are operating as intended. One of the big-ticket items that we were asked to investigate was some occupant comfort concerns here at the City Hall building, mostly pertaining to the windows in the front lobby letting in quite a lot of heat in the summer months. So we'll get into that in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. As Brian mentioned, another important element of this is the recent acquisition of the Heartland Events Center. The city knew going into that acquisition that there were some capital needs at that facility, and we've investigated those needs and put together a plan for helping you address a handful of those needs. And then overall, we're seeking a long-term partnership with the city to help you with your, your long-term planning and budgeting for capital improvement projects. So we're helping this, gives you a step in the right direction, and then we can continue this momentum. So I mentioned there was a handful of facilities that were included in this preliminary assessment. This list summarizes those six facilities. We've got some data on the total size of those buildings, the years that they were built, and their locations there. So not much information here on this slide. The next slide that you will see is a summary of the energy usage by facility and by utility type. So the three main utilities we look at are electric, natural gas, and water use at these facilities. You'll see a breakdown facility by facility of the annual cost. Again, this is from your 2024 utility billing data, the usage for that year, and then the rates that you're currently paying for each of those facilities and each of those utility types. This is the slide that really gives you some, some important insights to the energy use of these facilities. So we've taken the dollar per square foot cost that you're spending at these facilities and calculated what we call an EUI. That's your energy use intensity. Think of it as for the amount of square footage that these facilities have, how much energy are you using? And that EUI benchmark for each of these facilities is used to compare to a international standard from Energy Star. They have their own EUI benchmarks for similar facility uses, and we've compared those here. So for City Hall, for example, that's compared to just a traditional office building. The benchmark for that kind of a building would be 52.9 EUI, and the current EUI at City Hall is 71.9. So you're about 36% above what a facility of that type would be expected to be using for energy. And if you look at something like the Heartland Events Center, for example, you're nearly 200% above what the recommended, recommended energy use would be for an indoor arena. So there's, there's data here on these other six facilities. The one thing we will point out is that the emergency management communications building here was not benchmarked. There is not really a category that Energy Star has highlighted for that kind of a facility. Typically, when we're working with cities and counties, the 911 call center is already in a police department. So that high energy use kind of gets averaged out by the rest of the building. So we thought it would be an unfair comparison there to compare it to a traditional police department. But it is fairly high. You can see $3.67 per square foot. It's, it's got the most use per square foot, but that's to be expected with a facility with all the equipment that the emergency management center has. The next two slides are really just here for your reference. This is the page from the Energy Star Portfolio Manager website where we pulled those benchmarks for. As you can see, we're comparing to traditional office spaces, fire stations, libraries, police stations. Next slide is your indoor arena for the Heartland Events Center. We'd be happy to send you this document if you'd like to see a copy. And then on this next slide here, this is quite a lot of information on one page, but this is a summary of all of the different energy conservation measures that Honeywell is recommending, and a summary of the facility improvement measures that your teams have requested we include in these projects as well. I'll let Don speak to it a little bit later in the presentation, but generally speaking, an energy conservation measure is something that produces energy savings to help offset the cost. A facility improvement measure might be something that you need, but might not be producing energy savings to fund the measure itself. So it might require some, some capital input. You'll notice here that the emergency management facility and the fire station number one buildings really don't have a heck of a lot of recommendations here. That's because, quite frankly, the energy savings that you would see there wasn't very significant, and we knew that these buildings weren't huge priorities for the city. So we were focusing the bulk of our recommendations on City Hall and the Heartland Events Center. So we will get into each of these individual projects on, on the upcoming slides, but this is a summary of really where the focus is for these projects. This slide is again a summary slide of all of those different energy conservation measures and facility improvement measures. If you look at the matrix on the right side, we have color-coded this so that you can see the green and dark green items are the energy conservation measures with increasingly better economic payback. So something like an indoor lighting project where you are upgrading your older technology lighting fixtures with new LED fixtures has a relatively low cost of installation, but drives a lot of energy savings. So the energy savings from a measure like that can be used to help offset the higher costs for something like a humidifier repair replacement here at City Hall. So the goal would be to have a healthy mixture of these different projects that blend together into a project that is largely funded by the energy savings. But as the city moves forward with Honeywell in these projects and is considering the priority for implementing each of these, we recognize that all of these might not get implemented right away. So things to consider when you're evaluating your priority would be, is energy and cost savings the most important factor to you, or are you more focused on, you know, efficiency improvements, occupant comfort at these facilities? These are all the different criteria that our customers typically are mulling over when they're deciding which of these projects is right for them. So I will kick it over here to our solution development engineer, Don, to talk a little bit about each of these projects and the benefits that you would see from implementing these. We had already highlighted where these projects would be implemented, but we do have, the red text here indicates which facility would be specifically addressed with each of these projects. So go ahead, Don.
Yeah, so I thought we'd just run through real quick each of the line items that you saw in the matrix before, and then the color-coded matrix as well, kind of gives you an idea of relative energy savings. But in this particular slide, we're highlighting indoor lighting, lighting controls. Lighting controls could be something like occupancy. The one that we have noted here, we might want to do some rewiring specifically at the Heartland Events Center. There's the series of convention rooms, and one set of controls operates all of those rooms all at the same time. So if they're subdivided, that may not play well for, for individual of particular events. And then, and then also obviously outdoor lighting. And, and this would be focusing on converting all of the current technology to LED. Building envelope is one that, in each one, we try to put these in buckets. And as we walk through, as we develop these in the IGA phase, we're always interested in feedback on how to scale these things, do more or less as we're doing them. But building envelope is exactly what it's, what it, what we're trying to articulate is anything involved with the exterior of the building itself. On the far left of this particular slide, you can see what is a, it's a thermal imaging camera that we use to help highlight energy losses. So the wider area in the middle of that, what looks to be a door, because it is, is showing, is displaying a higher heat loss. So we would come through and we would adjust that and fix those. That would be from, from, from door sweeps and sealing off specific areas. So we could help with the infiltration. The middle is the, is a picture of the law enforcement center. There is some problems with the brick on that building. Unfortunately, it's a relatively new building, but has some, has some exterior issues that we can, that we can address. The one on the far right is obviously the beautiful entrance of this building, and there's a two-story window wall that creates a little bit of a comfort issue that we can address. Moving on, and hopefully I'm not going too fast through these, but the building control system that automates the HVAC, the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning equipment in a building, is typically automated and, and tries to match the comfort needs of the occupants. And we have identified in a couple of these buildings that the controls needed to be upgraded. We sweep through with a retro-commissioning, kind of an industry terminology, but we recalibrate the building to bring it back to the, the system's sequencing in the right operation. You're not wasting energy in the middle of the night when nobody's around, where you're taking advantage of outdoor air temperatures when you're, when it's available. So that's what we call retro-commissioning. And then the CEM, which allows us to help automate the monitoring of these, and it helps you do some management over time. There's, in the Heartland Events Center in particular, as you guys probably know, there's five boilers. Only two of them are operating. We think that we can get the other three back up and running and improve the efficiency of the other two. And so we're not recommending at this point in time replacing any of that, but just going through and repairing that, those items. There's three humidifiers, I believe, in this particular building, and they have not been functional for quite some time. That speaks to occupant comfort as well as the reaction of, of some of the equipment inside the building itself. We've also identified an opportunity to refurbish some of the air handling units, particularly in this building. As opposed to, again, replacing some equipment, we have been able to successfully sweep through and refurbish existing equipment, repair, replace all the moving components, leverage what's already there, and in a very efficient way, bring them back up to full operating condition. And then the replacement of some rooftop units at the, at the law enforcement center. There's three large units there that are needing, probably needing replacement. Can we continue on?
Yeah, continue on. So as we mentioned earlier, the Heartland Events Center is certainly a focal point of our, of our recommended projects here. We've been working very closely with the Venue Works team to understand some of the needs, wants, forward-thinking desires to help generate new streams of revenue at that facility as well. One of those high priority items is upgrading the existing arena lighting in that facility. The lighting that is currently there is original to the building when it was built 20 years ago. They are metal halide fixtures that are not efficient in any way, shape, or form. The current fixtures actually have a 15-minute warm-up and cool-down time period. So if there's any issues with power at the facility, they could have a 15-minute delay to get the lights back on. So first and foremost, the ask of the Venue Works team was to address that arena lighting with an LED upgrade. So we brought in a few of our So we brought in a few of our arena lighting, fan experience lighting partners to take a look at this facility and discuss what options you've got. So at its most basic standard package, you all would be considering upgrading to basic white light fixtures that are LED. Those fixtures do have color-tuning functionality from three thousand to six thousand kelvin. So if you're thinking about a hockey game versus a basketball game, those types of events require different lighting levels. A hockey rink wants bright white light, and a basketball court wants the warmer, you know, orange color light. The standard package would also give you individual fixture control, which is not something that the current system is set up for. It would give you full dimming capability and give you what they call paparazzi mode, so think of fan or player intros and lights flashing, that kind of stuff. If the city is interested in looking into upgrades for fan experience packages, there are optional adds to create an RGB full-spectrum, you know, sequence where the arena can be lit up all one color or a spectrum of different colors. There's a customizable spotlight package that you could put a sports team's logo, a band's logo on, or even a potential sponsor's logo on and have that moving around the stadium. There's also an option for a DMX wired system, which would essentially control the lights based on either pre-programmed shows, or you can connect it directly to the music and sound system to make sure that the lights are interacting with the sound. So the goal here would be to not only eliminate those warm-up delays, but this system would produce some significant energy and maintenance savings as well. It would improve the light quality in the arena, give you some enhanced control and flexibility, and ideally give you some new revenue opportunities by attracting some new events. These do have a quick ROI, and there are some local installations here in Omaha and in Lincoln. Their partners have invited you all to come out for a live demo if you'd like to see this in action before considering moving forward with this kind of a project. They'd be happy to help provide a demo for you. The next two pages here are just some pictures of examples. So I mentioned the ice rink versus a hockey rink, you know, difference there on the color tuning. And then these are some pictures of what the full RGB fan experience would look like in the arena. So certainly would add some fun to the new Heartland Events Center for you. Another high-priority item that the Venue Works team had communicated to us was the sound system at the arena. The existing sound system was originally installed directly on the rafters at the top of the facility, and there were some complaints for years from attendees that the sound was not loud enough, it wasn't reaching them in their seats. So the previous owners at some point in time had actually suspended those speakers about twenty or thirty feet down on wires, which helped with the sound issue, but now there is a sound quality issue, and the speakers are reverberating and vibrating. So we've partnered with an arena sound vendor who has already done a preliminary design. These are actually drawings of the event center that they've taken from our preliminary assessments, and they've already produced a preliminary design similar to the fan experience lighting. They would be more than happy to come out here and provide a demo of their equipment. They would actually bring their equipment into the event center, so you could hear what it sounds like there at the event center. So again, we very much encourage you to kind of see it in action for yourself, hear it in action for yourself. I'll kick this one back over to Don. This is another Heartland Events Center project that was a high-priority item.
So one of the things we were asked to take a look at is the current ice machine at the, it would create ice for the ice rink at Heartland Events Center. And some of the history, at least we've been told and seems to be true, is when that building was originally built, there was a brand-new ammonia system put in place, and to the best of our knowledge, it's never been actually started up. So in our evaluation, our plan is to sweep through, do a full evaluation of the system as well as the floor itself, and bring that back up to, we believe that we can get the current system up and running. We think we know what components will need to be replaced, seals, sensors, those kinds of things, and get that system up and running. We do have, we probably will, early on, want to work with somebody on the safety side of things to ensure that ammonia-based system is something that is acceptable to everyone. Not that it's a huge red flag, but some facilities, some locations have gone away from ammonia systems for a while. They've replaced it with other refrigerants. All refrigerants have safety issues that we always take into account, but that is one that we want to make sure that we're in sync with before we go down the path of repairing an ammonia system versus other technologies. And these are all discussions that we will have early on, so. And of course, there are a couple of places where there's some roof issues that we would, that we're going to evaluate further in addition to some water conservation, specifically at the Heartland Center, to ensure that there's proper operation of those facilities with that much of a public use, plus some water conservation as well.
So you might be asking yourselves at this point in time, how does a city possibly tackle all of these moving parts and pieces and projects at all these different facilities? How do you go about funding all this as well? So what we're here to recommend is leveraging ESPC as your alternative funding strategy compared to just a traditional bid and spec. If we weren't here today and you were attempting to tackle and prioritize all these projects, you would probably go through a traditional bid and spec model where you have to prioritize which projects come first. You would have to either hire a general contractor or act as a general contractor and bring in a bunch of different subcontractors to get this stuff done and manage all of this. Honeywell's here to help relieve you of that burden. So like I mentioned, that the typical process for building projects in the public sector is what we call the break-fix mentality. You wait until something is urgent, then you identify which of your assets are in need of maintenance or an upgrade. You go through your priorities based on the funding available. You might have to go out and secure additional CapEx dollars as well. You've got to manage multiple project partners, and then ultimately, you do end up piecemealing these projects over time rather than wrapping your arms around everything and taking a comprehensive approach. So what we're going to recommend is, again, energy savings performance contracting as a better way to tackle these infrastructure projects. And this program is actually governed by a Nebraska state statute. There is a law that governs how ESPC works in every state across the country. And really, what our process entails is, our teams have already come out to the site. We've conducted, you know, department-level interviews for all these different buildings to understand the needs and the challenges that you all are facing. We've collected three years of your utility bills to really understand what your true baseline energy use is at these facilities, and we've worked through some preliminary recommendations with you to help you understand what might produce, you know, a financially reasonable project here. Now, the kicker here that Brian had mentioned when he introduced us is, with ESPC, we are actually guaranteeing these energy savings. So if we come back at the end of this investment-grade audit and tell you we're going to save you two-hundred thousand dollars a year on your energy bills, we have to guarantee that through the term of the contract. So let's say the city moves forward with a fifteen-year ESPC contract, there would be a guaranteed energy savings number throughout each year of that contract, and Honeywell actually holds that risk on our balance sheet. So if there is a shortfall in the energy savings in any particular year, we actually have to cut the city a check for that shortfall. So rest assured that the savings that would be used to fund these projects would be seen at the end. So I already spoke to our process a little bit. We've conducted our energy and facilities preliminary assessment already. We're here today to review those recommended ECMs with you all. What we are asking of you this evening is to sign our investment-grade audit agreement, which would allow us to move forward with that investment-grade audit. Essentially, what we do at that point is bring out all of our different partners who are responsible for these projects. They would conduct additional site visits of these facilities. They'd provide us with their quotes and proposals for all these different options. And then we pull together one proposal, a very detailed energy audit report that we would deliver to you with a lot of this information that you've already seen. And then we also help you address the project financing piece of this as well. Again, the goal is to fund a lot of these projects with the energy savings and the operational savings that you would see, but we also work with our customers to help them identify any potential grant opportunities or local utility incentives and rebates. So we have a team of experts who is already working to identify a few different grant opportunities that would be applicable for the city of Grand Island and for these projects themselves. And we've been more than happy to work with any of your grant specialists as well to help you apply for those and hopefully contribute some additional funding to the project. Then we'd move through, you know, a traditional project deployment where we are acting as a general contractor. We joke with our customers that we are that one throat to choke. If there's a problem, you don't have to track down the lighting vendor or the sound vendor, you're talking to us three, and then we go handle whatever the concern or the problem may be. And then after construction is completed and all these projects are commissioned, we provide continual measurement and verification through the term of the contract. So there's an international standard that governs how these projects are addressed through measurement and verification. We have a team of engineers that would come out and take measurements year over year over year to make sure that the energy savings that we have guaranteed are actually what you are realizing. They would deliver a yearly report to you summarizing those energy savings, and that is how we were able to continue to hold that guarantee through the length of the term. We already mentioned the investment-grade audit. This is just a bit of a more detailed look into what that process entails. We told the team when we presented this a few weeks ago that we can move really as fast as you'd like us to move on these projects, but typically, an investment-grade audit can take upwards of ninety days. So with a process that's that long, we have continual checkpoints with your leadership team throughout. So at the thirty percent milestone, we'd be presenting to you some budgetary pricing for each of these projects, some anticipated energy and operational savings numbers, and a preliminary cash flow analysis. You can understand the return on investment for each of these projects. At sixty percent, we would have some firm numbers that we'd be showing you, and we'd be asking for you to kind of have a final selection of which projects you want to move forward with and at which facilities. And then as we move to that ninety percent milestone meeting, we'd be preparing our final proposal and contract documentation for you all to consider. Through that process, we would be conducting finance workshops with you. We'd be working with your teams to understand and validate any potential operational savings that would come with these improvements. And then we'd be happy to offer M&amp;V workshops as well to help you understand how that measurement verification process works post-construction. So why Honeywell? You may know Honeywell by a lot of different names or a lot of different industries. We have our hands in aerospace and national defense and performance materials. Our team here is focused on sustainability. At the end of the day, Honeywell is a sustainable company, and our goal is to help our constituents further their sustainability goals as well. We bring the financial advantage of having a large company who can hold that risk on our budget for the energy savings, and we have partners that we can bring in who can typically offer lower rates with this guaranteed energy savings tied to the project. And like I mentioned earlier, we are your single point of accountability. You don't have to manage all of these partners and drive yourselves crazy getting this work done. We take that on for you. And again, the sustainable impact is our goal at the end of the day. We're here to be a long-term partner for you. There are many other projects that we've kind of identified at a high level that could work for Phase Two and beyond. So we're here to be your long-term partner for sustainability and energy reduction as well. So that's really about all we had for you here today. Happy to open it to questions. I know that was a lot of content to take in. Yeah, go ahead.
I've got one comment.
Sure.
I meant to say this earlier. We asked them specifically to look at the Law Enforcement Center. All that stuff was part of his presentation. It's great. And the action item itself, that is not in there as of yet. We, for those of you who don't know, we have an inter-local agreement with Hall County surrounding that entire facility. As we got closer to the finish line, we realized that we actually need to address that directly with them, probably either through an amendment or an MOU update. And so that will be coming in short order at a later date. So this is everything minus the LEC, and hopefully, we can do it in short order and just do a small amendment to the action item tonight. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a motion right now, which is Mr. Pollock.
Two-one forty-six.
Mr. Lanfer, your name appeared briefly. Are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
Thank you, sir. Discussion. Mr. Nickerson.
First of all, I have one word: impressive. This is quite impressive, as I've taken a look at what appears to be a very comprehensive analysis. I do have a question for our group here as far as our administration. Exactly what are we being asked to approve tonight? I just need clarification to know exactly. Is there dollar values attached to it, or what all are we asking exactly tonight?
So what you're being asked to approve is the execution of an investment-grade audit agreement. So it's really the first step of this energy savings performance contracting statutory process that allows us, using the SourceWell Cooperative purchasing contract, to contract with Honeywell to do exactly that, an investment-grade audit, where they go through and they've done a preliminary review. They would go through and do that detailed engineering audit of each of the buildings that are listed. So we did not include all six. We included City Hall, Heartland Events Center, and the library at this point in time. And then, as Brian mentioned, if we can get the language that we need amended in the interlocal agreement with the county, we would come back and ask you to include the Law Enforcement Center. So they would go through and they'd do their review and come back with very detailed numbers. And as they showed you at those benchmarks, those numbers get more clear. Ultimately, the goal, from our perspective, and we hope Honeywell can deliver it, is that we can pay for the cost of the capital improvements that are needed using the savings on the energy bills. That's actually why we need to amend the contract with the county, because the interlocal says they pay actual utilities. And the goal here is obviously to reduce our utility costs and just move that money from operating to capital to pay for the cost of the improvements. These are all improvements that we already knew we needed. And so having, taking, I had prior experience with this type of contracting in Washington State. It's a uniform statute that's across the country, and watched clients pay very, very little for huge capital improvements. And I also watched clients get checks handed to them because the guaranteed energy savings weren't realized in a certain year. So it's, in my opinion, it's an excellent program that allows us to leverage savings on utility expenses with this program that allows us to use those savings to pay for the projects. So your long answer to your question is, we're asking you to approve proceeding with the investment-grade audit, and then we would come back with the subsequent contract once they get down to that detail of what are the actual improvements that will provide the return on investment that we want and need.
No funding is being requested at this time.
This audit is done preliminarily, not at their full risk. The first preliminary audit that they did was at their risk. We didn't pay anything for that. What happens on the investment-grade audit agreement is, they have come up with a amount that we would have to pay if we don't move forward to the next step. So if we do not move forward, if they come back and they show us that we can achieve our goal of making these improvements using the guaranteed energy savings, paying for these improvements. If they show us that, and we choose not to go forward with the construction, the next step, the actual construction contract or the improvements contract, or we were to choose somebody else to do the work, we would have to essentially reimburse them for the money they've put into doing the audit for our benefit. So that amount is two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-six dollars.
Okay, sounds fair. All right, well, let me tell you what I like. I like a lot of what I heard, and it's going to start with, first of all, just the comprehensive analysis that we saw so far. That's not even getting to the weeds yet, so this is pretty darn good information to start with. I'm impressed with that. I also think it's an excellent marketing tool for Honeywell to not only identify potential savings, but offer the solutions. That's what I like. And what you shared with us tonight were a lot of solutions that we could look forward to. I also really keyed in on some things you said that impressed me, is that there were many instances where you talked about refurbishing equipment and not just trying to sell us something. I like that, because that tells me you're not here just to sell something. You're here to look at the entire opportunities that we have, realizing that there are some things that are probably okay. And that says a lot about you as far as what I hear, at least at this level. at this level. I think that's very impressive as well. You're saying, we think some of this equipment can be, we just got to tweak it a little bit. We can change a few things here and there and this thing's going to work probably like it was supposed to. That's excellent. I really like that. I liked the discussion about ammonia. I come from a background where we had ammonia system for our freezers. And of course, it worked well until you sprung a little leak. And then it was everybody get out of the building because we got to find this leak. But you're right. Every cooling system has its own risks and we need to address that. But yeah, let's ask those questions and make sure that that's good. I think those are all very good observations as you've gone through at the level that you've looked at. I do have a question about, you know, all these beautiful windows, when this building is built, it really looks great. But you're right. When that sun starts beating in there, and I'm not up there in my office, I don't have to deal with it. But beauty costs you something here and it's some high energy bills and some discomfort up there. You hinted at some kind of a tent on the windows, I think. Just kind of curious, what kind of improvement do you see temperature-wise from, I don't even know what to use for comparison, but what kind of improvement do you see in the reduction of heat with those tentings?
So I, I appreciate that, that question. And we think it's a beautiful entrance. So we're not going to change the look. What we want to do, we would like to change the feel on the inside. And we think that there's two options that are probably our go-to. However, we've got a myriad of them that we're going to work through. And one of them is tenting, which just merely reflects a lot of that heat gain that you're going to see at the wrong time of the year. In addition to the fact that we are, this building is one of the buildings that we're going to be working on, the controls and retrocommissioning. So there's a series of things that we can do to help with the temperature gradient that you're feeling between the first floor and the second floor. So it's going to be a little bit of a combination and we know we can get there. And we're just, we're just a little bit reserved on the, the actual final. So we'll work with, with everybody on that and figure out the perfect solution.
Good. Because yes, the heat rises, so everything here is going straight up, you know, plus being intensified by the, the windows as it magnifies everything. So great observation and, and those little things. Yeah, I'm glad you don't want to tear down the building and put up some new stuff. So no, that's, that's wonderful. So your observation's been very spot-on, I think, and coming in here with those new eyes and looking. Your infrared tests tell a big story. I'm also curious about education. Once you get this, you know, part of energy loss is people with bad habits, leaving doors open. They don't care. They're not paying the utility bill. So why do I care if I leave this door open or not, if I'm in a fire station and the, you know, or anywhere? We just, we have bad habits sometimes. And hopefully, education is part of this as well as people need to understand that you may not be paying this utility bill, but you can affect how the utilities are being generated. And I, and I don't know that that's part of it, but it sure would be something internally that would be good for us to share with our people. A lot of this injury, energy loss is probably right now due to our, our, just some habits that we have that we could change. I like the LED emphasis. I mean, obviously, that's kind of a no-brainer anymore. That's just what you should be doing. And it's obviously a rights, it's the right step to approach the lighting. And I don't know the, well, I guess I do know the impact because I buy LED bulbs all the time. And it tells you how little wattage you use for the amount of, of lights you're getting. So I do know that. And that's big stuff. I think overall, I'm just impressed with this level of, of analysis, which I can't even begin to comprehend what it's going to be like when you get into the weeds on every little thing. But I like the part about the energy savings commitment guaranteed. As Laura already talked about, she's been involved with this before where she's seen where those commitments paid back to the, the customer because it didn't make it. I don't think you guys are going to get yourself in a bind where you're not going to make sure you guarantee what you find. And that's great. So overall, I've, I've seen analyses before. I've never seen anything quite like this at this scale, but I am really impressed and I think it can be very good for all of us. So thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. O'Neill.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm really glad to see that we're looking at this type of stuff out here. I've got a fair amount of experience in, with utility costs and building maintenance with office buildings and data centers. And I've seen anything from, you know, just bad seals on things to even just poor runtime scheduling with your air handling units, the LED lighting. I've even had one case in an office building where we put a film on the windows and reduced the sunlight by, I think it was about 70% in the building. You could still see out just fine, but man, it saved a lot of other, you know, heating issues. And sometimes even just doing small things like that, I call it, some of the kind of the low hanging fruit on this makes a huge impact. You know, when something's running all day long, you know, Mitch kind of talked about sometimes when people leave, you know, things are still running, you know, but if you do a good job and manage, truly manage your schedules, it's amazing how easy some of this stuff is overlooked. And I'm really, really glad to see something like this being looked at. So I, personally, I've seen, you know, very big results from doing this type of stuff in the past.
Mr. Sherrard.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Not all of our buildings are what people in Grand Island would consider old, like the event center and the law enforcement center. Like those are in the last 20 years. And you've mentioned a lot of pretty hefty upgrades that need to be done. And that's just 20 years. I don't know how much of that is neglect or how much of that is just technology has changed. If we do a long-term contract, you mentioned if we, offhandedly said 15 years, are there going to be continual upgrades that you guys recommend during that time? Or is this a one-time, we're going to make all these changes and then that's what it is for the long haul?
Yeah, that's really
Come up to them.
Please step up to the microphones.
Sorry. That's a good question. We actually pioneered this industry. We started it in 1986. But I can give you an example. Shisago County, Minnesota. We did our first phase in 1994. We did our second phase in 2006. And we just completed our third phase in 2022. So when we partner with, you know, local jurisdiction, our, our plan is to, you know, to go the long haul and, and give that, you know, give that sort of advice if, if there is room to make those improvements. You know, nothing lasts forever. There's ash for useful life. I'm from Green Bay, Wisconsin. There's another customer. We did a project in 1998, 2005, and then 2009. So this is something that's, it's continuous, it's ongoing. I could talk about, right now, we're implementing a $16 million project at the city of St. Paul at the Como Zoo for Geothermal. And we're actually moving on to, we're multi-phasing over the next decade for their carbon emission reduction plan. Actually, May 14th, we're going to be kicking that off with the mayor and, and their internal team, phase two, three, four, and five from now until 2035. So this, when we partner with the local jurisdiction, we are truly partners.
Yeah. And that's good to hear. That's good for your business too, to be able to stick with it. But it's good to hear that, you know, I, I just think of some of these buildings, we were there when they opened and it just seems like not long ago. We explained to people in Grand Island that we're going to be replacing lots of things. It's good to know that we're, we're thinking ahead with the future technologies in mind as we go. Is that something that you guys, I mean, how do you stay on top of that?
Yeah. And I, I think you had mentioned, you know, the, the lights and the HVAC equipment, for example. There's new lighting technology that's kind of hitting the market every 10 to 15 years anyway. So that's kind of that, that sweet spot where we're continuing to see that, again, you mentioned that technology is getting better. It's not that the technology you have isn't good or wasn't good when it was installed, but the technology continues to improve. And same thing with HVAC equipment. You're, you're seeing useful life expectancies at 15, 20 years typically. Now, Nebraska is a little bit different in your state statute. Nebraska actually allows for these to go as long as 30 years. So if you had some really capital intensive purchases that needed to be spread out longer to have more opportunity for energy savings to fund it, you could take it that long. But again, most of the customers we work with like that sweet spot of 10, 15, 20 years really kind of at a max. And as Josh had mentioned, again, we're continually looking for additional opportunities for improvement. And that's what that, the SEM, the Carbon and Energy Management software is very helpful for. It's a dashboard that pulls in all of your utility data from your utility vendors. I know that the city utility provides water and electric. So it's, it's going to pull in all that data. And then for certain different levels of that software, it can actually give you real-time insights into, hey, this damper or this actuator might be closed when it should be open. It can give your team the ability to make real-time changes without having to necessarily involve Honeywell. So again, with us hoping to be your long-term partner, we're, we're trying to help you make systematic changes in addition to these construction events as well. So, and, and again, there's a lot of different projects we presented here today. There's a handful of other projects that we could have included in this presentation, but we, to Councilman O'Neill's point, this is the low hanging fruit. This is the low-risk stuff that produces good savings and it addresses a lot of the priorities that we've been told are priorities from the city. So, yeah.
That is my next question. You were told these were priorities. You mentioned the ice rink. Again, 20 years. I don't know that we've had ice on that rink one time. I'm assuming that VenueWorks has been a part of the conversation or will be heavily involved.
Yes. Kyler's here today. So we've, we've been meeting with Kyler.
You can say his name. I'm not legally allowed to without fear of getting money.
So yes, we've, we've had a few different meetings and several visits over at the event center to understand. I know they've been there for a short period of time, but they've already had some really, really insightful conversations with us about what kind of change they're trying to drive. And, and I know they were brought in to help introduce new revenue streams, bring in new events, bigger concerts, that kind of stuff. So in addition to energy savings, a lot of these projects are helping with the, the pizzazz of the event center and helping it be new and refreshed and exciting for the residents here. So.
I'm glad they're in on it because I don't want to decide what lighting style to go with if it's not up to them. So that's good. You mentioned also grants, like getting grants. Now, federal grants right now is kind of a, what time is it? It's probably changed since we've been here.
Yep.
If, let's say, let's think very positively, we were able to get some of these grants. Does that factor into the savings or is that just more bonus to the?
We call them buckets of funding. So energy savings is one bucket of funding. Your operational savings maybe from your maintenance staff having to change light bulbs less frequently, that's operational savings. That's one bucket. Grants would be another. So ideally, we're, we're grabbing as many buckets as we can, filling those buckets up, and that's going to contribute to the projects. You know, if, if we're able to get you grant money that's above and beyond the cost of the project and the energy savings, then you might be able to tackle some more of these priorities that weren't at the top of your list. So again, nothing's, nothing's guaranteed. We might find a grant opportunity that looks to be great for you and we'll, we'll help you put your best foot forward in that application. But at the end of the day, you gotta take that ride with us and, and trust that it, it might be something that pays dividends for the, for the city. So.
Paying dividends, that's the last question I have. So as we do a longer-term agreement, each year, is it graduated out how much the savings will be? Because of time, is it like, no, it's $200,000 a year, every year for 15 years? Or is it, we see this much each year and it kind of reduces or?
So it's very prescriptive. If, I can keep going back to the lights, but if you think about, you're, you're taking one light bulb out, putting in one that's more efficient. Don here has a very clear-cut calculation that he runs of, hey, this is the delta in energy savings you're going to see between fixture A and fixture B. He then, you know, uses that to calculate, okay, what's the total amount of energy savings we're going to see in the first year after construction? And then unless there are drastic changes made in how these facilities are used, it's understood that the energy savings would be the same in terms of energy units each year. But as many of you may know, energy rates increase year over year. Your utility providers might charge you more and more. So we work with you to help understand what that percent escalation might look like year over year. And then we add that escalation into the energy savings table. So it's pretty common to see, you know, three or three and a half percent escalation year over year for that energy savings number. But again, that's a, it's a mutually qualified thing that we would agree upon as to what that rate should look like.
We have an N with the energy provider. So it's good to know. Well, I agree with what these guys said too. I think this is pretty impressive to see all the research that goes into it. And I think it'll be pretty smart for Grand Island to invest in this. So thanks, guys.
Mr. Pollak.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I think we need to get the audit first and see if, which I know there will be savings that can be had. This building has been inefficient since the day they opened the doors. And you can ask the people that have worked here over the years. And in 30 years, look at what the technology has improved to. I, I think we can be surprised at how much money we can save, hopefully, you know. But we don't have to go past the audit if we don't want to. But taking a look at it is a real, real good idea, I think, not only for us, but for the people of Grand Island. I think a big chunk of change can be saved by doing this. Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson.
Just wanted to ask the part about, you referenced what the state of Nebraska allows for this and that. And this may be a Laura question, maybe a Kerry question, or you may know. What is, how does the state of Nebraska play into this? Is this a legislation thing that, I'm just kind of interested in how that part works.
On the top of my head, I think it's, is it 66-1062?
Yes. It's, it's referenced in your memo, but it's, it's 1060 to 1066 of chapter 66. But the state doesn't monitor it. What the state does is they authorize itself and other political subdivisions of the state and local governments to use this type of a financing tool.
It defines which kinds of projects can be included. So we can't go build a new wing to the event center and do new construction. These are largely retrofit projects and the statute defines which kinds of projects can be included. It defines the, the maximum length of the term that you could carry this for. Like I mentioned, 30 years in Nebraska is, is pretty high. A lot of other states have 15 or 20. So they've got more flexibility. There's also a requirement in there for third-party independent review by a professional engineer of what we state as far as energy savings. So when we deliver that audit report to you, there's going to be a third party who will have to sign off on those energy savings before you can enter into the contract. So there's checks and balances here that the state would like to see.
Right. Super. Good to know. Thank you.
I have a question about the fee schedule. I understand for the audit that Honeywell has to protect itself. For instance, if you'd go through the whole audit and we'd say, thank you for your work product, now we'll just go hire our own contractors. That would be unfair to Honeywell. But my question is, how does it work then if, if you bring the audit back and let's say you spend $20,000 analyzing the ice rink system and the council says, you know, we've looked at that, that's not something we want to pursue. Does the city then have to pay you for audit work you've done, but the council says, we don't want to do that?
So what that, we, we call it a break fee. What that break fee represents is our true dollar-for-dollar cost to develop this investment grade audit. Again, we would just be hoping to recoup that investment in, in that audit. When we deliver that investment grade audit report and our proposal to you, you're going to see, very similar to this, a litany of different project recommendations at different facilities. You are not bound by any way, shape, or form to implement all of those projects that we've recommended here tonight. Those are just the projects that we're asking you to hire us to go investigate. Should you, for example, the ice rink system, if you decide that's not something you're interested in, but you want to move forward with everything else, what happens is that break fee gets carried into our total project cost. And again, as, as Laura had mentioned, the goal is to have the energy savings offset the funding for these projects. So if you have that full break fee in there, but the, you're cutting away some of the energy savings by removing projects, it might be harder to cash flow the projects, for example. Does that make sense?
No, I, I don't understand it. So, I guess my question is, if, if you come back with the audit and the council says, no, we just don't think there's a future need for an ice rink.
Sure.
Which you've expended $20,000 to audit the ice rink system. Does the city owe you for $20,000, owe you $20,000 because we rejected that?
We'd pull that into our cost structure for the projects we move forward with.
Does that mean, does that mean the city ends up paying for it anyway? When you say you pull it in your cost?
You pay for it because they did the work.
Yes. That's, okay. I think that needs to be clarified then. The items you're going to be auditing
There isn't
are actually, are actually being endorsed by the city tonight because otherwise they're going to, you're going to come back and, and I guess I would say it gets awkward because then, then you have to make a value decision as to, as to whether you ever wanted that in the first place. And if you didn't, And if you didn't, you're still going, you're still in a roundabout way going to have to pay for it. The audit.
Sure. Yeah, so what you would be agreeing to and committing to this evening would be that $220,000 for us to deliver the energy audit proposal, report, contract to you. You're correct, one way or another, you will end up paying for that. If the city washes its hands of Honeywell completely, then yes, we request for that break fee.
Completely or partially?
Yes.
See, that was my question.
We don't parse it out. So, if you decide not to move forward with one particular project, we don't say, hey, that was this portion of the 220, we're requesting that back. That full 220 will get rolled into whatever projects you did decide to move forward with. But then, it stands to reason that because you're not getting the energy savings from that project, you have less funding to help offset it. Maybe that helps.
You don't actually cut a check to Honeywell for the work that they do performing the audit? The cost of paying for the audit gets rolled into the construction project. So, regardless of what you have them build. So, if you don't have them build something, you've
You're paying for the design.
You're still rolling that cost for, say, the $20,000 into the costs of the other improvements that you will be doing. So, you're taking
You're hiring like a mechanical firm to go replace a bunch of rooftop units. This would be their engineering design, their upfront design essentially would be the line item.
I guess my question is, I'm kind of iffy on the ice rink.
Sure.
Because nobody has come to me and made a case, we should have, it's never been used in 20 years, and nobody has made a case to me that there's any market for us having an ice rink.
Sure.
Can you spitball me a number as to how much you think the audit's going to cost for an ice rink? The audit, the audit.
I'd say that portion is in the ballpark of about $35,000 to $40,000. So, to your point, if you are uncertain about a particular project or a particular facility tonight, yeah, we can revise that investment grade audit to remove that portion, just like we did with the law enforcement center. There'd be a reduced break fee and then, no harm, no foul. But then, you wouldn't get the results of that audit. You wouldn't understand whether or not it could be a simple fix that's $10,000 to get that thing up and running or maybe a full replacement needed.
And maybe the council, if the council wants, they can provide input as, you know, something like an ice rink. But, I want to be fair to the council tonight. They've been presented a buffet of projects for auditing and they didn't decide what's on the buffet. So, my question is, since you, since you agree that it can be amended, so if council would desire to give feedback to the administration, how much time would you need before you knew whether something was in or out?
You mean, how much time would it take for us to revise that agreement?
Yeah.
For you? A day, two days?
Okay. All right, I just, okay.
And in terms of the Heartland Event Center, so we did rely on Venue Works because they're actually there operating the facility as to what areas they thought should be focused on for repairs. The ice rink was part of the RFP because it is something that is available. So, part of the initial discussions was, do we, does it work? That is part of the engineering analysis that Honeywell would do. If it does work or if it doesn't work, is it cost effective to repair it? Do we need to remove it? Because it takes up a significant amount of space, an entire control room. And it's there. I mean, I believe it's been drained, if I recall. Kyler, is that correct?
I believe it's been drained.
Yeah, of the ammonia. Yeah, but it's, it's, the report we had is they started it up once and, and then it was, they never booked any events that required the ice. Venue Works in their RFP response and in their management plans does think that if the ice rink is available and working, they would absolutely be able to book events that would utilize it and it would be a source of revenue.
Mr. Sherd.
Thank you. I feel like we are really getting into the ice rink conversation, but you brought up a couple of points that kind of got me thinking. You had that on your chart in the dark red, that it's not a high energy savings?
Pretty easy to explain. So, a piece of equipment that hasn't been turned on in 20 years doesn't use an energy.
Right.
So, when we get it turned on, it'll actually consume more energy.
It's going to be a negative.
Yeah, so that is something that would be a FIM, a facility improvement measure. It's not conserving energy, but it's something that needs to get done. So, you can, you can choose to leverage us to help with that or you can go out on your own and
How do you, how do you factor in then what it's saving us as part of your estimate on savings if we do start to use it?
That's, that's our point, is it would not be
It doesn't, it doesn't factor into that.
And that's why we provided that, that matrix, the color coded matrix. The idea is, you want to cherry pick enough of those low hanging fruits to drive a lot of energy savings to help offset maybe that capital cost for something like the ice rink. Ideally, these projects have a mixture of really high energy savings measures and maybe some capital needs that need to be addressed. Kind of blends out into something that's budget neutral at the end of the day.
And Laura, you said that Venue Works is excited? Like, this is something they would really want is an ice rink?
I think Kyler could probably speak to that.
Okay, we can't.
That's why he's here. So
I need legal opinion. Somebody's being called to come up.
He can come up on his own free will, but we can't force him to come talk.
On your own free will, correct?
My thought was, I'm not an elected official.
I can still fight you.
I'm Kyler Tarwater with Venue Works and the Executive Director at the Heartland Event Center. The ice rink is, there are so many different ways to use ice. You know, bring in a tenant team, a tenant hockey team, public ice skating, bringing in events like Disney on Ice. There's a million different ways to do it or a million different things to do with the ice. There are executive directors that want nothing to do with ice. It's a lot of work, you know, taking the ice in, putting the ice in, taking it back out, having a rodeo come in the next week. There's a lot of work and hassle that goes with having an ice rink. It's a lot easier not to have ice.
I came from the, what used to be the Kansas Expo Center, now the Stormont Valley Events Center, and we had ice. We experienced both. We had a tenant hockey team for a while and we had it, after the hockey team went away, we didn't have a tenant team and just used the ice rink for public skate sessions. We used it for Disney on Ice. The best show, probably the most impressive show, and one of the reasons I really have a heart for the ice was, it was a show, a Cirque du Soleil show called Crystal. I've seen a lot of different shows and it's one of the few shows that I, that I saw that literally, there were times during the show that I, it was, wow. It was, it was just a breathtaking show. It was elegant, it was beautiful, it was something that Topeka really didn't ever see. It was a true Cirque du Soleil Vegas type experience that we brought in. And we had three nights in a row that sold out weeks ahead of time for all three shows that came in. So, there was a credibility element, but to bring something like that into that community, Topeka's a fairly small community. It's a lot like Grand Island in a way. But, it was just a total elegant element that we brought into a community that typically didn't have that. So, that's one element that I am pro ice for that reason. There are people in my company that don't want to mess with the ice because it is a lot of work. And I'm sure my operations team will probably be unhappy if we get ice at times because it's more work to it. But, what we can do, and what I see it as more than anything is a, it's a community ad, it's a community value ad. When we bring in a show like Cirque du Soleil, we bring it in. Of course, we have to set up the ice the week before, so that week before, while it's sitting there as we wait for Cirque to come in and start their practices, you can open it up for public skate sessions. And Cirque show comes in for that weekend, you do the show for the two, three, four days, whatever we do, then you leave it down for another week after that and you have a public skate session. So, in general, we never really opened up the ice rink to have public skate sessions every week. But, whenever we use the ice for events, we created, you know, a community ad, a community value ad for the public to come in and skate. We didn't make money on public skates. That was a give back to the community. We didn't lose it because the ice was already built based on the show that we were bringing in. It's, it's a fun element. It's not a have to have, but we have an entire, if the plant works, if it really, if it works, like it seems like it should, I've only heard rumors about why it wouldn't. But, if it works, there's a reason that ice rinks work in certain places. It is not my intent to bring in a tenant hockey team. I'll tell you why, since I'm up here. A tenant hockey team has to practice, you know, they've got to have practice time on that ice. So, weekends, you've got to schedule, so you block out all these weekends that you could be bringing in concerts and other entertainment. So, I'm not a big proponent of that. But, I am a big proponent of maybe doing exhibition games between some major, like Minnesota has a really strong hockey, Division One hockey team. Bringing in some exhibition games for one weekend to have some really big time hockey games for a one weekend event so you don't lose all that ice time and arena time in between. I see maybe even a top prospects opportunity for top prospects to come in and compete and do kind of exhibition games to show, to have hockey. So, anything that we do would not be to take the ice and use it for one specific purpose. It would be to use it in a way that we could bring in different type of elements for family, for the community in general to use the ice.
So, you're the guy in charge and we have to make a decision tonight to put 40 roughly, I don't want to say that's the exact amount, but roughly $40,000 to audit that machine to find out if it works now, as rumors tell you it should work, or it doesn't. And we have to then decide, gosh, is it worth that money and more to put more into it to get it to do those things? But, you're the guy that I'm going to look to, to tell me if that's something you are asking us to do. No pressure, but tell us right now.
That's a great question. And I am certainly no politician. I'm sometimes too blunt, as Laura even knows. I'm fairly direct in how I speak. I mean, the answer simply there is, I don't know, but I can tell you the things I do know. Storage is an issue at the Event Center. You know, we're currently in a rebuild on several different areas to kind of maximize the storage that we have. Now that we're not owned by Foner, we can't store product in other places over at Foner Park. It's now got to be contained internally. So, storage is an issue. So, let's say we decide today just not to have the ice plant, we're going to take it out. There's going to be a cost to take out the ice plant, to have it removed, have it sealed, to use that storage. And we're talking significant storage, I mean, from here where I am all the way this way, it's significant. So, it would be helpful. So, whether we keep the ice or don't keep the ice, there's going to be a cost associated with the next action step. It would be my druthers to actually find the least expensive route to actually test this to figure out if the ice rink works. Then, we can make decisions on whether we want to bring in, what we want to bring in for the ice. I do know that the community, from what I've heard and what I hear when I'm out there talking with folks, is they would love to see it. And from a community perspective, it's mostly just probably to go skating. It's something different to add to the, to the land of Grand Island. I have some kind of unique ideas that I'd like to use the ice for that I think we could and I think it would be different and fun. So, when you take the balance of this audit that's going on right now, that looks like it's about 220 grand to actually do this full, complete audit, we walk away from this audit with our most efficient options and we walk away understanding whether that ice rink works and we can use it, or that ice rink doesn't work and we need to remove it and take steps to actually utilize that space in some other way. If that
Yes.
In a roundabout way says, I don't have the answer.
Okay.
But, I can tell you this, from day one when I came in, the questions that I've been asking from internally at Venue Works to anyone that I talk with that has any experience with ice is, how do we find out if this thing works or not? At some point, the members of this community that built this place decided that ice rink was actually worth spending the money to put it in place. To me, it's a shame to sit there and walk in there and watch and see, literally, in the original packaging, still sitting in that room, something that we purchased that we've never even taken a shot at using. To me, that seems like a shame.
Thank you for that blunt answer. I appreciate it. I guess, Mayor, to your question about should we keep that in or not, I think I heard enough that it's probably worth it to keep it in at the chance that we could have some of those That would be my lead.
And I appreciate that. I just, I just want the council to have an opportunity to discuss it rather than just concede to the idea that these things are going to be audited and, and you never got to say yea or nay. Mr. Nickerson?
One of the things that I missed in Grand Island that I had when I grew up in Colorado Springs was an ice rink. We had a lot of fun on that ice rink. I think if I tried now, I'd probably hurt myself. But, it was, it was something to do. And I'm really appreciative of you sharing ideas of what you think we might do with that. Honestly, I didn't even know we had it set up for ice. Had no idea because we've had nothing from it. But, we know that the Viero Center brings in Disney on Ice. I know all over the world, United States anyway, probably the world with Disney, has Disney on Ice. But, there are other ice shows as well. I'm not sure how that fits into your schedule, your master schedule, but when you have those dead times, if you can turn it into ice and we get people excited about ice rinks, it's going to be very good. What I don't know is how, of course, when I was part of the group that went to the ice rinks, they, you could rent your skates there and all that. I don't know that you get into that. I'm not sure about that part of it. Other people, you know, will invest in ice skates. Grand Island will actually start selling ice skates, maybe. But, it's, it's a good thing, it's a fun sport. It's, the people that do the hockey thing can do it, the people that like the figure skating can do it, those of us that just like to skate around, we like to do it. And it was, it was another activity that you could share with your family and with your friends, with your youth group. It was a lot of fun. And I think, to your point, if we have it, I'd sure like to know if it works and then if you can somehow incorporate it into your master plan, I'm all for that. I'd sure hate to just clean it out and say, no, we're not interested because it was installed for a reason. It's just nobody wanted to pursue ice events that were in management of that, apparently. Or, maybe we felt we're in competition with Carney. But, we have options and we have a new sheriff in town called Venue Works and could look forward to good things. So, I would be in favor of keeping it and doing the audit. That would be my personal input.
And I do want to make sure that the council has the opportunity to ask questions about the recommendations from Honeywell and staff as to going forward with this product, project. We, Honeywell's original preliminary assessment, they pulled all of our utility bills. They then identified the six that had the highest energy costs. So, that's why you saw a fairly new building like the 911 Center being part of their preliminary analysis. When they presented to staff and the mayor their findings from their preliminary review, their recommend, they listed out all six projects. And after talking as staff, we said, well, we just don't see a need for that one, no need for real improvements to the 911 Center because it has high energy costs, but it has high energy costs because it has two server rooms and a fairly low occupancy rate for square footage. It's working as it was intended to work. The other one was really the only improvements, Fire Station One had some, has high energy bills. Understandably, it has high garages, right? But, the only improvement that was even requested, no energy efficiency improvement needs were identified. But, there was a request made by someone to put in automatic shut offs on the gas barbecues. And I'll be honest, I looked at that and I said, that's not the type of improvement that we want to put in with this. If that's something that was a safety issue, that should have been addressed. Otherwise, I spoke to the chief about making sure people turn off the gas on the barbecue range. So, we did have them narrow it down to specific buildings with the focus being on things that we knew, we know are already in our capital improvement plan. We know about, we knew about the problems with the HVAC system in City Hall. Part of the reason why we got re-involved with Honeywell and got them working again on this, because if you read the memo, we started actually talking to them in '22 and the initial feedback they got from some departments was that, no, there's really no need to do this. And then, I was presented about a year ago with a quote for installing air conditioners at the top of the lobby upstairs to deal with the heat that happens in the summer from these windows. And I said, this is crazy, that's clearly an energy efficiency thing. Let's get Honeywell back in here to actually do the preliminary assessment and look at these buildings. And then, when And then when Kyler took over management, VenueWorks took over management of the Heartland Event Center, and I was over there having a meeting with him, and he walked me through their boiler room. And we saw that of the five boilers, three of them were shut down as not operating. And he also noticed things about the lighting and the controls, where not just education on turning lights off, but education on properly using the HVAC control system and having it be calibrated so that it works properly. I think you told me the solution, because apparently nobody really knew how to run the system, was they just set it at 70 for 24 hours a day, which in a building with ceiling heights that high, no wonder we have 200% higher utility bills. So the whole idea of this project, as Jordan very eloquently explained, is leveraging the opportunity for energy savings. And if you can package other facility improvements with that and get those upgrades done and made, that's a win-win for the taxpayer because we're being fiscally conservative. We, as city staff, kind of like Kyler explained, we can't tell you whether you should spend a penny on the ice system because we haven't had, we haven't paid an engineer to look at it. So with this contract, we are proposing that we get that engineering analysis of its operability and repairability and whether it is cost-effective to move forward with it. We just can't answer the question for you of whether you should spend that money without paying an engineer to do it. So that's why we presented you with the list of projects that are in this agreement.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance Number 10A, consideration of approving salary ordinance. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Mr. Nickerson? Mr. O'Neill?
I move to suspend the rules.
And Mr. Pollak? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 10,013. Mr. Schmidt, please present.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So this salary ordinance is just some maintenance activity, three things on there. First one, we have an open IT position that we attempted to recruit previously. Didn't have any luck, so went back to the drawing board. Got some advice from, some professional advice, appreciate that. Retitled the position, changed the job description a little bit. So for the purpose of the ordinance, it's just retitling the classification. Wages stay the same. Next one's just a correction. We found an error on uniform allowances for one of our union groups. There wasn't any financial impact to it, so we'll just correct that. And then the last one, minimum wage went from $12 to $13.50 per hour January 1st. You know, we were in compliance with all of it, but we're just, since we had it in ordinance, we thought we'd update the record while we're presenting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is in order, Council. Mr. Pollak?
Ordinance 10,013.
Mr. Landfair? Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance Number 10,014, consideration to amend Chapters 27 of the Grand Island City Code to amend various sections to clarify and/or make general corrections to various code sections to provide for the sunsetting of the current Chapter 27 after all pending procurement active, all procurements active on or before June 6, 2025 have been concluded and to provide for publication and the effective date of this ordinance. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Shered?
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules.
Thank you. Mr. Landfair? Any discussion?
Please vote.
I'm sorry, I did not allow Mrs. Fisk to present. I apologize.
It waits after the suspension of the rules.
Oh, we're just voting on a suspension of the rules?
Yeah.
Okay. I take back my apology.
Motion adopted.
Mrs. Fisk?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You did find the one item a lawyer doesn't have anything to say about, so some credit there. Members of council, this is the same ordinance that Mr. Brown reviewed with you at your last study session. The only changes that have been incorporated since your last review in more detail is that we removed the language, based on your feedback and the mayor's feedback, that would have authorized the mayor to sign smaller value contracts without council's consent. So under the modifications, all contracts will come to you regardless of value. Otherwise, it is exactly what was presented last time.
Mr. Shered?
Thank you. I move that we pass Ordinance 10014.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
I second that we approve 100014.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We had an excellent meeting with lots of lively discussion. Those are always very enjoyable. We are adjourned. Have a nice evening.